Garen, thanks everybody for joining us today. You know, of course, our Democratic colleagues already have some very interesting proposals out that we intend to address and intend to take issue with. This entire special session that begins tomorrow was supposed to be originally about shortfalls in our budget and how to shore those up, how to make the necessary cuts and whatnot. It was, it developed into something about the COVID-19 pandemic and ways to address that. And then very quickly with national events, it expanded out into areas that we had not foreseen involving law enforcement, involving so-called criminal justice reform and the like. It's evident from what we're seeing from Democrats on social media especially, that they're going to push a number of items that are going to make it much harder for law enforcement professionals to do their job, to attract people into that profession, to maintain people staying in that profession, to undermine their safety, to undermine the public safety and the safety of our communities ultimately, taking individual instances of wrongdoing across the country and applying them out to police and policing generally and making them very much feel like they are the bad guys while at the same time diminishing punishments for actual bad guys. And we think that is very bad public policy. We think it is misguided, that it is not in keeping with what the public would want. They certainly want what we want, which is to make sure that, that we do get rid of bad police. And I think the people that would most want that are the police themselves. They do not want to serve with people in their ranks that give them a bad name or may endanger them or may put them in a position of being, getting in trouble themselves or endangering the public. They don't want that. So this assault on police generally that we're seeing emerge is very troubling. And again, we do not intend to let that pass unnoticed. Threats to defund the police, to assault police professionals, to release violent felons early, to put onerous additional burdens on businesses at this time are all things that are non-starters for our caucus. On top of that, our colleagues in the Democratic Caucus do not seem to care that much about the situation involving our children going back into schools, or more appropriately and more specifically them not going back into schools. We think there is a way and there should be a way that we can get our kids back into school safely, to do it in a responsible way, and that frankly, we're doing much more harm than good in keeping them out of schools. And we would like to provide additional resources to parents and options to parents in terms of how to educate and best see that their children do not miss important developmental opportunities that they will never get back. So to that end, we have priorities. House Republicans, even though we are in the minority, have priorities this session that we intend to take up and push and advance. That's why we called this press conference today. We do not expect our colleagues to moderate their positions. They have been increasingly pulled to the left, to the most extreme positions politically that they can be pulled on the left. But we want, for instance, to, as I mentioned, to help parents and students find creative solutions to this situation. We don't expect our Democratic colleagues to join us in that effort, but we hope they will. We hope they will realize that, you know, putting kids first and parents first in terms of not missing these important developmental opportunities is essential for our Commonwealth ultimately, for our collective well-being and for the individual well-being of our constituents. We think it is vitally important that we address the extent to which executive authority has been used and abused during this pandemic. We went from two weeks to flatten the curve to now several months into this use of executive authority through a state of emergency to put all manner of requirements on individuals, on businesses, and on struggling businesses at that. And so we intend to pursue, in these unprecedented times, pursue ways in which we can relieve those burdens and address the extent to which executive authority has been overused and abused. Finally, something near and dear to my heart, as a former prosecutor of 14 years, we think that our colleagues are about to overreach in a very dangerous way in their approach to criminal justice. Releasing violent offenders certainly early is not in keeping with what has made Virginia have the lowest rate of recidivism in the country and the fourth lowest violent crime rate in the country. Virginia has done a good job of getting it right. And contrary to all the, you know, the notions that we are somehow a place where all these non-violent offenders are languishing in our state prisons, that couldn't be any further from the truth. And we have the, the numbers to back that up. Our criminal justice system locks up the right people, sex offenders, drug dealers, violent offenders, recidivists, people who are career criminals. Those are the people in prison. And the reason we have the right people in prison is why we have such a safe society here in the Commonwealth of Virginia, unlike other places in the country. We don't want to become like those other places. And we think that to walk back to things that have been proven successful only endanger the lives of our constituents, our children, and just put us in a very dangerous place again. So I'm now going to turn things over to our caucus chairman, Kathy Byron, who has some words for you.
Thank you, Todd. You've covered quite a bit of it, so I will try not to repeat too much, but it'll be difficult not to. You know, it's great to finally be allowed back to session by our governor after waiting for months to have the opportunity to share, discuss, and debate these important issues that we're facing. So I'm looking forward to being there with everyone. Let me first start by talking a little bit about what the Democrats want to do, because clearly their priorities are not in order. The Democrats seem to be more concerned about letting criminals out of jail and into the community and supporting protesters than fixing our budget and paying the Commonwealth bills. As usual, we're hearing how they want to spend the money, but we're not hearing anything from them on how we're going to balance our budget and pay our bills with taxpayers' money when they aren't working and how we're going to provide better protection for our senior citizens and let businesses operate to boost the economy without fear of frivolous lawsuits. And very importantly, how to make sure our children get back to school and get the education that they need. You know, it's a plan that once again doesn't work and won't help the problems that exist. The Democrats' plan to respond to rioting and destroying public property by weakening our police and sheriffs. Their plan is to place more restrictions on law enforcement, which will make it harder for them to keep us safe. Their plan is to defund the police by instituting new policies that cut funding if law enforcement doesn't do its job the way liberal politicians want and divert the money somewhere else. The Democrats continue to promote policies encouraging leniency towards violent criminals. That's what the parole board controversy is all about. They have systematically released convicts, murderers, rapists, violent criminals before they've completed their sentence. In one 30-day period, the parole board granted early release to 95 violent felons, including 35 murderers. How is that plan going to work to keep our citizens safe? Democrats don't want to cut the budget. Democrats like to spend money and they have to cut the budget. We've seen no plan on how we're going to address the $2.7 billion shortfall. You know, over the course of the state emergency, Democrats have been content to let the governor governed by executive order. They want to prevent anyone from restricting or limiting Governor Northam's power. And I think that's one thing that Republicans all agree on that we're going to work on, and that is making sure that there are limitations put in place so that when this happens again, that we can govern properly. We'll be fighting their plans to defund the police or shifted needed resources they need to keep our community safe. We're losing dedicated officers that put their safety on the line to protect ours. You will not do that by letting criminals out and putting policies in place that don't strengthen our law enforcement system. One of the most important things we can do is make sure we have safe communities, that our families can work, play, and raise their families. We'll be fighting their plans to reward rioters. We need to stop allowing the destruction of property. We'll be fighting their plans to make our elections less secure. We'll be fighting their plans to add additional burdens and threats to businesses that are doing all they can to provide jobs and a safe environment for our hard-working citizens. We'll be supporting policies that put our kids back in school. And we'll be supporting policies that make our senior citizens have the care they deserve and need during this pandemic and the ability to see their loved ones at a time that they are the most vulnerable. You know, I heard 60% of the deaths that occurred were in nursing homes. We need to do something for our senior citizens. But with only 44 of 99 votes, it's tough for us to stop these things. But we intend to make sure that these bills get their full constitutional consideration in the light of day so Virginians can see just how far left the Democrats intend to take this Commonwealth. And with that, we look forward to being there on Tuesday, and I'm going to turn it over to Rob Bell.
Well, everybody, thank you for attending the press conference today. And I've been asked to speak about some of the proposals for police reform and criminal justice reform. I begin by saying that we believe that most cops are good cops and that they're doing the best they can in a very difficult job to fulfill their duties. And so to provide the good cops with more support so they can do a better job is one of our goals. So that includes several things. Number one, we would definitely support increased and improved training that can go both to use of force, which would entail how, when, under what circumstances, how can you structure an interaction so that use of force never becomes an issue? All of those are in use of force training. We would continue to support improvemental health training. There's something called CIT, Crisis Intervention Training, which is a very practical curriculum for our law enforcement to help them identify when someone they're interacting with has a mental health issue. We would support the expansion of that to even more officers. Number two, we would support their duty to intervene. We think it's appropriate for good cops to step in when they see someone doing something they shouldn't. Number three, we would report the expansion of the use of the body cameras. These record everything that happens, good, bad, or indifferent. We think that good cops would welcome having more cameras recording what was happening. Now, we understand that there are, of course, some bad cops. And for them, we have a series of different proposals we would support. The first is we need to get them off the force. And if they committed a criminal act, they should be prosecuted. So we would, we would support improvements to the decertification process. Now, once an officer has been kicked off the force for use of force violations, we think it's very important that he not land on some other department. So again, we would, we would support a better decertification process and there being more information available to those who hire new officers when they try to get a new job. Third, we would, we would argue that we should prohibit collective bargaining agreements from addressing these issues in a way that stops employers, stops sheriffs, stops chiefs of police from taking a bad cop off the force. We think that's an inappropriate use of these new collective bargaining measures. Now, in addition, we believe that this is an opportunity for us to stand directly behind crime victims. We have two recent examples we've all seen. The first would be the recent murder of a rape victim in Alexandria where the defendant was released and he shouldn't have been. We think that underlines what happens when violent and dangerous offenders are released early. And we will have measures that we propose that'll make that less likely in a similar circumstance. Second, we think the scandal at the parole board underlines why it's so important that crime victims be given a voice and that those who speak for them be allowed to speak. We will certainly have proposals to increase transparency at the parole board and other measures to bring crime victims to the fore as they go through their deliberations. Those are some of the things we support. We're going to oppose some things. We've heard proposals, and the Senate Democrats in particular, have released a proposal to defund the police. We think that's the wrong answer. We would oppose that. There have been proposals to reduce penalties for those who assault police. We would be opposed to that. We would certainly oppose efforts to remove SROs from schools. Virginia recently was rated as the second safest, but Virginia schools were rated the second safest in the entire country. We think that's a point of pride. We think taking SROs out of schools is the wrong answer. It's a mistake. And fourth, we would oppose any effort to release early, for the early release of violent offenders. We think that we have a very safe system here in Virginia where the fourth lowest violent crime rate in the country. And we think it's the wrong, it's bad policy to release violent offenders early. I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Well, this is Kirk Cox. I think I'm next. And unlike Rob, sort of funny, he had a whole list of counter proposals on the Democrats on K-12. My biggest disappointment is we've heard almost nothing from the Democrats on K-12. I think as our leader said, that we're going to have a, the session certainly has expanded past the budget to COVID-19-related issues, et cetera. But we're just very disappointed. I think all some of the Democrats have said very little on K-12. And I've been very upfront. I think that's a lack of leadership, both from Democrat leadership and the governor himself. And it's really been a false choice to me sort of all summer. It is the Democrats sort of saying, if you can't operate normally, then you can't open. And I just think that lacks creativity. So I think a lot of you know, we've held press conferences, Republicans, we've really outlined that, you know, we can get close to normal. We're not going to get to normal. We do need to have a safe learning environment for both our teachers and our, you know, administrators and our kids. But how do you do that? The question the Democrats never will answer is, so how can you do it better? So today, let me try to answer that. Through the budget, we're going to try to do two things. First of all, we're going to reemphasize, we need a path to reopen schools. We really do need to help localities do that. A lot of them have told us over the summer, there's been such a lack of guidance on the state level, issue of their liability issues, just opening issues. So for one, we're going to put a budget amendment in that does something I think is very important. It just helps with startup. It provides flexibility. It could be PPE testing. It could be, excuse me, PPE. It could be testing. It could be rapid testing. It could take current funds and just give school systems the flexibility to use those on school opening. Our goal as Republicans in the budget is to really engender a discussion about how are we going to open schools? Some schools have opened and offered a virtual option and a lot have not. So that will be the number one priority. But let's be honest, a lot of big systems are not operating. They're not opening. So what do we do if they're 100% virtual? How can you help parents out? How can we help students out to really make this work, which will hopefully more open? And so we're going to do several things along that line. We're going to have something that I think is fairly innovative, and that is dealing with supporting our parents who already are sort of being creative with things like education pods, where they're bringing in tutors and teachers to actually teach their kids. So we're going to put a budget amendment in that draws on CARES Act funding, about 100 million. And it is called the reimbursement for educational alternative decisions. It's got a catchy name, the READ Act, so you can remember that. And one of the things that would do, it would be a locally-driven program. It's optional and the localities would create the program. There'd be reimbursement for parents, obviously, who would look at some of these alternatives, everything from tutoring to computer access to the pods they're creating, et cetera. Part of the funding would come from the state CARES Act funding, about 50%. The localities could also use their CARES Act funding as a match. So we think that's the type of creative thing that would really help parents sort of navigate their way through where they're at right now. And so we look forward to pushing creative ideas like that in this upcoming session. And I'll leave you with this. We feel pretty strongly the education has got to be a focus of the special session. And that's what we'll do as Republicans. I'm going to turn it over to our leader, Todd Gilbert, who I think will take some questions and for any further remarks. Todd?
Thank you, Kirk. And yes, we're ready to take questions if anybody has them. Garen, if you want to open that up. Garen, can we just start talking and ask our questions? Is that how this is going to work?
My apologies, my computer just locked up. WTVR, why don't you ask a question while I attempt to fix what is wrong over here on my end?
All right. Thank you very much, Garen. So a two-part question. First off, earlier this morning, there was an announcement of a new coalition calling for emergency, or I guess emergency legislation related to paid sick days, calling for five paid sick days and then for 10 or two-week sick days for COVID-19 specific stuff that would be tied to this public health emergency. The legislation, as far as I can tell, hasn't been filed. So just general reaction to this idea. And also as well, the House Speaker has again indicated a desire to move to a virtual special session here. I know that was something that was attempted and failed in the veto session. Is that something that the Republicans will be not unsupportive again this time around? Well, it took us about an hour at the reconvened session to get around to voting on that particular proposal to change the House rules to allow for a virtual session going forward. And the hour it took was because of technical difficulties. And that was just when we were moved out on the front lawn of the Capitol grounds, not even taking into account that we would all be in, you know, 100 remote places. You've seen just the minor technical glitches that we're having right now putting on this call. I think it is, it does a disservice to our constituents to ask members to try to execute their constitutional duties virtually. We don't have any assurance that we would be able to speak when, when, when we would like to speak, to, that our vote buttons are going to work, that we would be able to call out a point of order if we have a parliamentary issue to bring to the attention of the speaker. There are lots of things that are just untested here. It appears to me that the speaker has found a perfectly appropriate and safe indoor venue to hold this special session. We are going to prove that by meeting there in person tomorrow and to do, and doing so safely. And so if we are going to have floor sessions, it seems to me that the speaker has already found a great place to do that, a place where we can do that and be heard and know that we will be able to properly represent our 80,000-plus constituents that we each represent. And to do something other than that, I think would be contrary to our democratic institutions as we know them and our ability to carry out our constitutional duties. So I do look forward to seeing what her plans are in that regard, especially since she has found an appropriate venue to meet in person tomorrow. Of course, I think there may be some notion that the Attorney General has some opinion or we have voted on some budget amendment that would change the necessity that Democrats realized that they would need to change the House rules in order to proceed in that way. And nothing about that has changed. The House rules have not changed. The necessity to change the rules to do a virtual session have not changed. Even Congress, I believe, actually got together and voted before they went to a virtual session themselves. So if she intends to do that, I would expect at least we would have a vote on that as, as would be required. To your second question, you know, you're talking about an additional burden, I assume, on businesses. Again, we haven't seen the bill, but I assume all of those calls for paid sick leave would fall on, that burden would fall on employers. These are employers who just endured the worst session for business in the history of the Virginia General Assembly. They are still catching up to what their new requirements are going to be in terms of wages, in terms of exposure to lawsuits, in terms of extra payments for insurance, workman's comp, not to mention the hit they're going to take when all of this unemployment insurance skyrockets at the end of the year. So small businesses are already reeling from the added effects that the legislature has put on them even before this COVID-19 put so many people out of business and threatens to put so many more out of business. And on top of that, all the regulations we see coming out of Richmond on those businesses. So to add this extra burden, we think is just another example of Democrats not understanding what it takes to be in business. The fact that those who are going to be harmed by additional burdens on businesses are workers themselves, people who have good-paying jobs with benefits, all of a sudden, we're going to see those dry up if we just keep pushing and pushing employers to the limit.
Thank you. Next up, we have Heather Curtis from WMAL. Heather, if you can unmute yourself, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you so much. So I'm wondering, given that the Democrats are obviously in control of your chamber and the Senate, how confident are you that you can get any of your priorities passed, anything even heard in this era of partisanship?
Well, certainly not confident that any of them are going to pass. We still hold out hope from time to time that there are reasonable Democrats who can find a moderate landing spot despite the fact that their, their base keeps pulling in these extreme directions. We still hope that there's, there's room for reason and common sense among our Democratic colleagues. And frankly, we have some objectively good ideas that we think should be heard. And even, you know, even if they face an uphill battle in terms of garnering votes, we would hope at least that the speaker and our colleagues would afford us the opportunity in a, in a democratic institution to have those ideas heard, to have them debated, to have the, the public have the ability to weigh in on those ideas. And so I don't yet know how that's going to pan out, but I know that we deserve the opportunity to have those ideas heard, and I hope that is the case.
Todd, if I could follow up on that too. I think you made a great case. Let's take K-12. Now, for Democrats say so often that is their priority. So I would find it hard to believe they wouldn't sit down and talk with us about really smart solutions in K-12. I think everyone admits the computer access, especially for minority kids, et cetera, is a real issue, trying to help them with paraprofessionals, et cetera. Why on earth wouldn't they want to discuss some of our ideas in K-12? And so I guess I would sort of challenge them that if this is the priority that you've always said it has been, it certainly is for us, you would want to sit down and work out some of these solutions. I would hope they're simply not going to, especially from a legislative standpoint, not pass things just because they, they're a Republican proposal. You know, if you look at all the parents groups right now, they really are having to make tough choices between, you know, their, their working lives and caring for their kids. They're hurting. And once again, I wouldn't, I would find it hard to believe the Democrats wouldn't step up to the plate on these issues.
If you have a question, please just flag us in the chat on the right-hand side of your screen. I don't have anybody in the queue right now. We'll give it just a second, see if anybody else has any questions before we let our panel go back about their day. Okay, I see a question here from Bonnie Atwood. Bonnie, if you'll unmute yourself, ask away.
Thank you. I apologize if this was discussed when I had to step out, but my concern is citizen and lobbyist access to legislators, particularly during committee discussions and floor actions, and giving testimony to committees. If, if, if all meetings are virtual, will our communication strictly be in writing or after hours, or how do we do this?
Well, that sounds rhetorical in the sense that we do not have the answers to give you, but we do, of course, share those concerns. And, and we did talk about the virtual, the prospect of a virtual session, Bonnie, but we didn't touch on that. I think you make an excellent point that, you know, on any given day in the legislature, lobbyists, citizens, you know, just engaged folks who want to be heard can walk up to their legislator in the hallway and talk to them or, or be heard in a committee. And all of these issues about shutting down the session and potentially making it all virtual just deprive people of the opportunity to participate in a democratic process and we think does not lend itself to good legislation ultimately emerging from that process.
Todd, if I could add to that. Bonnie, I put a bill in, or it's, it's in waiting for a number, I guess, right now, that deals with some of this. I think it's very important that we have public comment. We rely on the public and we rely on the information that we receive from lobbyists in regards to how policy will have an effect on the, what we're trying to do. And with the bill that I put in, it goes back to the regulations that went into place, many of them during the COVID ID that did not allow for public comment or allow for input from the public. And I think it's very important, especially with some of these regs that are coming out, that they put them out, but then they revisit them and be able to get feedback as well before they release them again. So I have a bill that deals with that for regulations. But session, of course, is another great example of that. So we have the same concerns that you do.
All right, next up is Jackie from Channel 8 here in Richmond. Jackie?
Hi, so just a clarifying question about the READ Act. So are, what exactly can parents use this money for? Are you saying that they could use it to like transfer to homeschool, for example, if that's something that they were looking to examine? And what type of funds are we talking about here that could potentially be distributed?
Well, they are CARES Act funds, if you remember. And it can go for a whole host of things. Now, on the homeschool front, for example, right in the budget. Now, on the homeschool front, for example, right in the budget amendment, it says private online learning programs. So obviously, any kind of platform like that, internet access, education-related goods, computer hardware and software, tutoring services. It's basically meant to be something that would help address parents with whatever needs they think they need. I mean, as you know, different kids have different needs. And so it could be everything from advanced placements test, the norm reference test, et cetera. And so it's designed, and I think everything we're trying to do is designed to be flexible enough where we sort of meet parents where they're at. And that's why, once again, even with the funding we're trying to provide to schools, we don't really know everything they do need. We obviously know they need things like PPE and testing capability, but we're trying to build enough flexibility in these budget amendments where, you know, both parents and schools can basically address what they need. A rural locality, even a parent from a, you know, a Galax is going to have different needs than one from a Fairfax. So we'll sort of built for that. Let me remind you that the way it is drafted is the localities may establish the program. And so once again, we're, you know, giving localities the flexibility to do that and a reimbursement mechanism for them. We also, within the budget amendment, anticipate if there's more federal funding, that basically the governor in this language would set aside a reasonable amount of that to further hopefully help with this act.
And the locality does have to cover 50% of the cost of the program, you said?
Yes, but remember, they can do that with their CARES Act funding, too. So they can either do that through their local revenue, or they can do that through their CARES Act funding.